A call to order this meeting of the design review board for the city of Litchfield Park. And would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. And to this school with the liberty of justice and moral. Before we start our agenda. We always ask if anyone in the community would like to address this board on anything that's not on our agenda tonight. Is there any requests to speak or anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, so move forward. The first item is approval of minutes. You get a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve as published.
Okay. So. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed?
Okay, they've been actually they're opposing.
Okay.
The ayes have it.
Um, approval, uh, item B, approval of new perimeter wall. And what I'll do is I'll have um. The director, uh, planning director, you state the case for us and then it the is the applicant here?
Hmm, yes.
Okay, and then you can add to his presentation if you would like to. Okay, thank you.
Chair, good evening. It is Wednesday. We appreciate the day early due to tomorrow's festivities. Randy Proch for the record, your planning director. This is item five B is entitled the new perimeter wall. The applicant in honor is Diego Espinoza here in the audience this evening. His address is five ten Redondo Drive North. This is a request to do a new perimeter wall along his rear property line and at the street side. Ways background, uh, zoning is R one fifteen single family residential. This request would add a new wall along the southern property line and the east end of the yard. It would be a block construction stucco and paint to match in accordance with the general provisions, section thirty one of our zoning code. This is a street view. Uh, Google was very nice. Uh, they went through the entire city in October this year, so we have very up to date uh, street images. Uh, a little outdated, but we have a photo to show what the current situation is, but in case there's ever any questions or concerns, uh, we do have that uh, new. Imagery available to us. This is uh, what was in October. The uh, change, we'll flash in just a second, is that the Oleanders, I believe Oleanders, thank you, uh, have been removed. And now the request is to build a new block wall, uh, no higher than six feet to match our requirements in the area that is depicted in the yellow. It's important to note, and I'll talk about it here in the analysis, uh, that it is not along the eastern property line. That's the street side. There was a initial concern by our city engineer as far as the house to the south. The house to the south is what is known as a key lot, meaning that their front yard faces uh, in a situation where they they back out of the driveway. Uh, Mr. Espinoza's wall could impair visibility as they reverse. However, the driveways on the far south side of the property, and again, as mentioned. This wall is just uh, in line with the edge of the home itself. It is nowhere near the street. As already illustrated in section thirty one, as far as uh, design requirements in general provisions, these are met. And as well in section thirty nine, which has all the requirements as far as design codes. We have not received any public comments on this proposal.
Yep, I chance have an aerial of the of the.
Chair, I can pull one up independently of his presentation if you give him just a moment.
Good aerial shot.
There you are.
Okay.
The house is uh, the. One that's centered on the screen. So as mentioned, I'll do a very rough uh, sketch here for you as far as essentially it'd be something of that nature, if you can see that white line.
So the southeast corner of the house is where the wall is going to die into?
That's correct.
Okay, and then uh, when I went by there today, I see there's uh, some staking out there that looks like, because they located the property corner. And then some little flags, and then when it gets back into the southwest corner, uh, the block. And and I didn't walk back in there to see, but I mean, just looking at how close these homes are. Uh, and do we have any idea what really is going to happen? Uh, and where the the west side is going to be for the the uh. New block wall, or are they going to tie it into that existing block wall that's back there?
Chair, I would defer to the applicant uh, who's available for questions uh, to answer that for you.
Thank you. Give your name for the record.
Madam Chair, uh, Vice Chair, remember, uh, my name is for the record Diego Espinoza, five ten Redondo Drive.
And then can you answer um, Mr. Dair's question about where the wall will line up?
Yes, so i- if if you don't mind, I can give, did you go back one?
Above.
The aerial.
If I may, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, may approach the screen, so I can give you.
Very quickly, there is a fence that's currently runs along this side here.
Yeah, I can see that.
What we're going to do is tie into this this area here and then just come right straight out and then align with the house.
Okay.
So we are going to tie into the.
And and the property line?
Yes, sir. So we actually added stake down to the states, the markers, you see, we actually added.
That is the property line, so it puts it really close to the south house.
Uh, so this is the current fencing.
Yeah, yeah.
It wouldn't encroach more than what the the current fencing is now.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But, you know, looking at it, just eyeballing and seeing, but then seeing the aerial shot of all these homes in here.
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, the actual, um, you you'll see a mark, and so probably back here. It actually shoots out this way. We are not going that far, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, they wanted to depict the entire fence line or the property line, but we are all coming to.
Yeah.
And then go into the title.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or applicant? As I know, like if we're doing a project, like a like a site plan is the aerial or site plan is probably the the plan that you need to submit for. For walls like this, because it's hard to, from elevations and stuff, it's hard to guess where exactly it's going to go. Any more questions?
Okay.
Chair, just to conclude the presentation, our recommendation is to uh, motion to approve the proposed wall, this case PZ two four six one. Located at five ten Redondo Drive North, subject to exhibits provided by this applicant and stipulation one, which is a building permit is required.
Okay, great, thank you. Motion?
Nope.
Madam Chair, if I may, there was a question earlier if the neighbor to the south was uh, spoken to.
Yeah.
We did communicate with her, and in fact, she was very happy. Uh, apparently, there's been some issues with bees in the past.
Wow.
And so she was very delighted that we were actually taking down the Oleanders and putting on the fence.
Yeah.
Just wanted to put state that for the record as well.
Thank you.
Who want, if you'd like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move this. We approve the new perimeter wall located at five ten Redondo Drive North. With uh, was it stipulation one, stipulation one?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Would you pass this thing?
Thank you.
Okay. The next step is uh, for an approval of accessory structure and garage addition. And again, I'll just let the planning directors uh, present the case, I'm assuming you're the applicant, and then you can add to it or answer questions. Okay.
Chair, thank you again. For the record, Randy Proch, your planning director, uh, this item five C, this is the accessory structure in the garage. The applicant is the architect, Deborah Weisberg. Uh, she's been, we've been communicating for a long time, about three months, uh, in Brook here, Tilia is the owner. The address is one thirty East Estero Lane. And the request is to build a nine hundred and sixty square foot garage addition onto this home and a five hundred foot accessory structure in the rear yard. Uh, the zoning is R one, just to uh, break down the requests for you this evening as far as how we got to this point. This is to add an RV garage off the main driveway. The driveway is on the north side. I'll show you the depictions on the next slide. This is going to be connected to the main house, so in addition, in the letter of law, according to zoning code in the IBC. Uh, to the main house through a breezeway. In the backyard, there is a freestanding accessory structure proposed. And this is really the start of a much larger project. This is, I guess, called phase one of a bigger plan to take on this house. This is a look at the overhead, and if needed, I can pull aerials as well, just let you know. Uh, the dark gray depiction is what is being proposed for you this evening. The main house is the uh, outline in black without any fill in white. So the garage. Is on the north side. We'll call it the right side of the depiction. There is right now a side load garage, so they come in the swing. Uh, this new garage would be straight back off the main driveway as well. The breezeway is what you see connected from the house to the RP. Uh, garage, and then in the backyard is uh, was being titled as a game room, uh, a gathering space, uh, whatever it could be. Uh, maybe uh, makeshift OR as needed, uh, in the rear of the. Just from above is how this would lay out. Again, on the left is uh, garage addition. On the right, it would be the overhead of the game room, and then below are the four sided elevations of the proposed game room as well. Let's just go a bit further, how this would look, just from street side, see the primary home on the left, the RV garage on the right. And that connecting roofline feature between the two. As far as analysis goes, uh, we do want to apologize as this applicant, this process started in late August or about week fifteen, which is uh, uncharacteristic of. This organization and this process, we're, we went through several iterations uh, to understand fully the scope and nature of the project, and we needed to. Address a number of uh. Challenges with uh, what the zoning code permits. Uh, this was a much different project when we started. Uh, through uh, the code restrictions, we ended up uh, where we are today. Uh, it still uh, certainly meets uh, the applicant's intent, but uh. Sticks within the confines of what the code permits. Uh, section thirty nine, of course, as in all of these situations, is met. What is before you this evening in memo format is a request to uh, remove. Uh, stipulations three and four. Prior to uh, additional conversation with the applicant, it was noted that some of the features of the new RV addition just. Didn't necessarily uh, like for like match some of the material choices of the primary residents. So until uh, recently after the uh, creation of the staff reports. It was asked of this applicant to scale back some of the uh, design choices of the addition to match the house. What has been revealed through subsequent conversations is the new addition is the new direction, the applicant wishes to go, and we will see a subsequent application for the main house to go under. Similar changes and updates. The uh. Inspiration House would be the four hundred North Old Litchfield Road, uh, just next to Reds and the Wiglam parking lot, if you're familiar with, uh, that whole. So, as requested, uh, the recommendation is to move to approve the accessory structure and garage addition, PZ twenty four forty is the case number. Located at one thirty East Estero Lane, subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant, and the modified stipulations one and two that are on the screen. And provided to you in the memo this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, if you wanted to rise and and state your name.
I think, I'm sorry, this is very confusing for everybody. We've been back and forth for so long now.
Yeah.
Whatever questions I can answer, just let me know.
Okay.
Um.
Was there anything that he didn't say that you wanted to say?
No, it's just phase, uh, what I was telling Randy, um, via email was that we wanted to start in the backyard so our family can get away from the dust while we reface the house to. Basically, our muse, if you will, would be the four hundred North Old Litchfield House. That type of style is what we were going for, so we wanted to redo the elevation on the house. After we had somewhere to escape just from all the dust. I have little kids.
That's the big point.
That's the big one.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, but they have the the black awnings and the white stucco that's real smooth. We don't. What we have right now, we just have to redo, but that's phase two, so just it's just for phase one.
Okay, when I first looked at this, I didn't, I thought that it was just like, no, this this garage has nothing to do with this house, and so. I wouldn't, I was inclined to say no.
Right.
And then the other thing I noticed is that the connecting breezeway is really not really a breezeway, because it sticks onto like a window of a bedroom, not a.
That goes off.
Doorway.
Yeah, it goes right off to the the backside of the garage, right into like the house. Um, so the other thing that we were thinking is that we could move the garage more towards, it would be the south side and just. Put it into the garage itself and make a door out to the front, but that was a whole other thing, but. We wanted to.
I just know it was like a purposeless, just like a little connector arm, and it didn't really serve any purpose for.
Chair, not to uh, not to tangent too far off, but just to maybe provide more context to why this is uh, occurring. By letter of law with international building codes, so not just local or state or federal, international building code. Uh, there are rules and restrictions for fire concerns as far as how things are treated once they become accessory or a part of the principal structure. What has occurred, not only in this situation, but I'd say dozens of situations around Litchfield Park is a connecting element to uh. To ensure that it is treated as part of a principal structure as an uh, an addition instead of an accessory structure. We have strict requirements about accessory structures uh, that really limits creativity in some senses as far as how to be successful in some of these larger lots. So, what does happen is certainly, you know, insurance is made aware that. If the RV garage catches on fire, the house catches on fire because they're all connected. The alternative to that is always the accessory structure that's set ten feet apart. The idea being that if that catches fire, your principal structure is unharmed because of that separation. Anything closer than you have to have fire ratings, you have to increase construction costs in order to combat that, so. It's it's a creative solution that's been used frequently to uh, find solutions for the desired outcome.
Yeah.
I I think.
I've used it one certain times, but um, but it's usually it's connected in a way that's an actual like. Door to door, like one one door goes to, and then it goes to another door, this and just seems to go from a window to a block wall. There's not, it's not really a breezeway, because nobody's walking under it.
So the only thing that I can, if I can.
So here, this is just roofline, and then all of this is going to be gate, just like the four hundred North. So it's just going to be gateway, exactly the same way that it is already at that property line. The way that they have it drawn out here is that it's going to be stuck out and ripped, and that's not the case. It'll be a regular uh. Lot iron fence, if you will, the same way there, and it's just a pass through man gate.
Mm-hmm.
As the same, and it's already built at four hundred. I just copied it. What was the paper?
Are you, are you changing then the roofline of the main house?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Oh, my gosh, so that's a whole other thing.
Brooke, if possible, just for record.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So sorry. So the the hitch line that's going back on this type of roofline is going to be more gabled, and then at the, it'd be the west side. Window there would have a awning, same the black awning, and the same thing on that garage awning that's on the east side. Of the thing, and then um, the foyer would be modernized with the. The gable thing. It is literally just copy and paste over from over, just shrunk down on a much lower screen footage. Much, much lower. But it, yeah, everything is changing. I'm working with a general contractor that is familiar to the city of the Rodolfo's. Are taking on this project, but we were working without my architect on that part of the project. That's the only difference. So.
Any other questions?
I just. Okay.
And I was just like, you know, I don't.
Fair, that's a fair point.
And right now, it doesn't look like it, it will look good, but it's like, it might have been good to present the whole. Does I, even if it was in, if it was in rough form, it might help your case a bit.
There, so we did renderings, or I had my architect do basic rendering, but she didn't change the roofline like I asked her to. To match the the new house, but.
And Chair, just for the record, what is being shown to you this evening is part, not part of this.
Yeah.
Process.
Yeah, yeah, I think it helps us to prove that if we knew what's to.
Yeah.
Um, because it's hard right now. It doesn't look like it belongs, they don't belong together.
Sure, are you the square roof on the? Uh, RV garage or?
That, yeah, the roofline of the RV is very, very modern versus the.
Which is very nineties when the house was built, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah. So.
How big is the RV garage? In other words, the door itself is a ten, twelve, fourteen?
It's ten foot tall, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And then it's only a two door or a two bay garage door.
Yeah, no, I wasn't worried about the two door, I was just.
Yeah, it's like, it's.
Because I see both rooflines match, and if it's only a ten foot door, it looks like it's out of proportion.
Yeah.
To what they're actually uh, roofline across is.
Fair.
Fourteen. B.
Fourteen.
What?
Fourteen foot.
Fourteen feet high, she changed it, okay.
The the door is fourteen tall, eight foot wide or ten foot wide?
Remember, that's correct.
Fourteen by eight.
It's got to be at least a nine foot door, it can't be less than that.
Nine by nine foot wide.
Yeah, it can't be less than that, because that's a single.
Yeah, I don't think it's even.
Well, they can make them whatever.
I know, but you can't fit a car in nine feet.
Yeah, no, but I mean, um, um, is it going to actually hold an RV?
Yes.
Class A?
Class, no, it should just be a B. That's what, that was the instructions that we gave, because. It was too tall to be closest to the west wall or the east wall, excuse me, and so we had to move it further into the house, which wouldn't have worked. So we. We timed it down just a little bit.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, you got RVs now?
No, just rails. We have, we do outdoor things. With some sand rails and everything, so we have to haul them, so we just want them on a trailer into the house.
Good, good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Because over time, people that have built a garage like this, and oh, we're getting into RVs. Unless, unless in three years, they're done with an RV.
Oh, yeah, no.
Relies, don't need it, doesn't work.
Yeah, no. Yeah, just for the kids. And.
Okay, but I mean. I would ask that, like, you reduce it as low as you possibly can to get whatever vehicle you are aiming to get in there. And not just shoot for the maximum that.
Sure.
Any RV in the world could fit in there, because it's just, it's kind of still, and all houses that do this, it's still like a sore thumb sticking out.
Sure.
It's, at at best, we can do is just kind of. Tone it down a bit. Any other questions? I don't, what are your thoughts? I mean. You know, I just, I'm I'm down RV garage, even though I I do not like them, so I'm just being honest.
Well, I guess. Staff is is recommended, and they worked through, and so we're only, we're only looking at this because there's something coming later, but it's here yet. So, I don't, I don't have an objection, but. You know, the, I've often said that my wife should be on this board because. She works for a company and get up on ladders, all this kind of stuff. As a lawyer, it's not necessary for me generally to worry about such things. As long as it's legal, and we're not going to get sued by anybody, I'm okay with it. That's why we have you sit on this.
Yeah.
Please all have a role.
Your thoughts, Bob?
I'm fine.
You're fine, okay. All right, well, if one of you wants to propose a motion?
Propose the motion for the staff recommendation dated December fourth uh, changes uh, to the um, actual recommend approval. And enough for you?
Thank, yes, thank you.
Okay, second.
Okay, a motion and a second. I have. Uh, it's, the vote is the majority of who's present, or it has to be all three? It's the majority of present.
Yeah, that's true. This is not a super majority situation.
Okay.
They, they are absent this evening, so they do not factor into it.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to vote nay, but just because I don't like, that's right, it passes. And um. Moving forward. Yeah, that was it, a staff report on current events.
Sure, thank you. Uh, just two items for you this evening, and of course, uh, tomorrow night, tomorrow night, excuse me, we'll look to see all of you, uh, except Mr. Legger, who said he will be absent. At the boards and commissions appreciation dinner. We certainly appreciate uh, your service, and we'll look forward to that tomorrow. I've already uh, mentioned that I'll be uh, eating twice, uh, I'll just say I'm picking up for David, and uh, I'll go ahead and consume as well. Uh, just two updates for you beyond that, uh, Litchfield Square, as of. Two days ago, three days ago, uh, more of the fence has been removed. It is now just in the Palm Plaza and the playground area. Uh, most of the park is now been opened. You will continue to see work being done. Beaveringly uh, through the end of the year, and then hopefully early in January. And that's, uh, this is the overlook wall, so you're looking west at Palm Plaza. Palm Plaza is not complete yet, as they are taking equipment in and out uh, to do the playground. Once all that playground is done, they can finish off the rest of the rows of the palms, uh, so that is the overlook wall, so if you're standing up there. Facing east, that'd be towards the amphitheater and uh, future events. As far as the hilltop, uh, just two renderings, these are now. Up for discussion this evening. We look to hopefully have this before you in February, so please plan to attend, and this is one of many things uh, we should see back uh, before you in. February, including uh, possible developments within Litchfield Square. So just uh, two, just quick renders as far as what could be. This has not formally come in yet for any sort of review. This is uh, the marketing brochure, you could say, and we look forward to seeing uh, this project and. Others uh, in the square and on the hilltop as well.
This is the Alwakriya project, the the fine arts.
What you see in front of you, yes, Chair, just to uh, clarify, the Alwakriya Academy is on the left. Proposed the performing arts center, seven hundred seat auditorium for school, city, and public events uh, is on the right. In the previous image, the library would be the foreground image north of the campus.
Totally.
Okay.
You go ahead.
Do you know, have any, in the city center, have any other, I know one, as one building has broken ground, or is there another preparing to?
Uh, Chair, I I would, I'll, I can provide answers, as you know, this is for information, not for discussion, but because of my uh. Incomplete presentation to you, I'd be happy to elaborate on the presentation information, so. We expect lot three and four, that it is strictly north of the park to break ground, probably after the new year. It's uh, hard to. Stage equipment and then take it down, and everyone's on vacation for two weeks, so they're probably going to have golden shovels in January. Uh, we have two others that we're currently in negotiations with. Uh, if those do. Uh, proceed, uh, you'd see those applications on the northwest corner and south of the parks surrounding City Hall, possibly in February as well.
Okay.
So, so lot three is the one that we may see real start of construction after the first. So, so lot three is the one that we may see real start of construction after the first year?
Yes.
Okay. What's an hour, what's a year and a half when you're waiting?
Board member, if you want.
I know, before you were right.
If you would like to reach out, uh, through email or phone call, I'd be happy to expand on that or, uh, tomorrow night during our, uh, open dialogue during dinner, we can chat.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
We, we can discuss it tomorrow over there.
Uh, do any board members have any report on current events?
Well, the current event, a, a big one was Thanksgiving, but it's over with. So now, now it's chowing down on those leftovers, right?
All right. A motion to adjourn, please.
Salute.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right.